We are live on YouTube.
Hello, world.
Us and a million teenagers.
Laughing their butts off.
I don't think it's gonna go viral.
I really hope it doesn't.
Yeah, that is a bad word to use right now, too.
Oh, yeah. I'm looking and we are live streaming.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's hope it does not go viral because unless somebody carries their phone to the restroom or.
Make sure you're muted if you do that, though, okay?
Okay, Jolene.
Is it all right to have wine?
Absolutely. Who's to know?
Well, he might see it.
Not if it's in a solo cup.
Yeah, you don't have to put it in a wine glass.
That's a good point. You've done this before.
That's what brown bags are for, you know? Don't drink out of the bottle either.
It's weird. I keep on the scroll down on the page.
Yeah, I can't do that.
All right, I have the phone number listed on this page in case anybody wants to call in with any comments. That's the number we will call or you will call. And I put it up there now because there'll be about a lot of one minute, 30 second to one minute lag between this and the YouTube feed. And so we'll have to pause when it comes to time for the community input, make sure.
Do you think Howard will have a lot of questions?
Maybe, maybe.
As usual, yes.
I'm hoping he's at least watching us.
Yeah.
I feel bad if he wasn't around.
I know.
Well, let's mind your camera angle and stand if you're able. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the republic. All right. I'll ask Jolene to do the roll call.
Dawn?
Here.
Grimes?
Here.
Meadows?
Here.
Wakeman?
Here.
Anstett?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Mayor Gardner?
Here. Okay, let's, everybody had a chance to look at the amended agenda. You noticed the flood millage is, was added today. Hope everyone had a chance to see that.
Yep.
And if everyone agrees, if I have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda in the minutes in the billboards, speak up.
I propose a motion to approve the consent agenda, the minutes of March 12th, 2020, and the payments of the bills of warrant number 14029 paid in the amount of $31,833.45. As also the bills of warrant number 14030 unpaid in the amount of, sorry, my screen is, there we go, $19,958.66 as well as the visa bill in the amount of $454.70 as presented and waived the reading.
Support.
Support.
Or.
Support.
Okay, we got motion, we got support, and I just started recording at just the right time there. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Move my. So we have no presentation or public hearing. Move right on to the mayor's report, and of course, COVID-19 is top priority. Number one is our safety of our residents and of our, all of our employees. The first thing we did was lock the door because people were coming in when we, when we heard that this is really starting to be a problem. We isolated each other, then we went to trying to rotate through the office as much as possible so there's never two people in there at the same time. There's our hours, our regular office hours are pretty much to the wind now. We all put in the time we need to get everything done, and Jolene and Dee do a great job. Dave Gouls, you can't say enough, you know, he's done everything. We all do a cleaning as we come in and go out. The police are in charge with enforcing the executive order. Monday morning, there's a webinar about how we're supposed to do that. It's kind of nice of them to tell us at this point, but the chief has signed up for it, I am signed up for it. It's Michigan Municipal League, if you want to join in on that. The fire department has the PPE that they need, they have several masks, they do have some, they have a limited number of N95 masks, but it's a, it's enough to get, get, they can get by with it. The building department has stopped issuing builder permits unless it's emergency repair. The DPW, they're using safe distancing and working in their areas. I told Dave, do not, if you're doing anything where that's risky at all, make sure there's somebody there. So other than that, jobs that just have to be done with two people, use all of the PPE and stay isolated. We are going to install a glass along the countertop. Mike Dempsey suggested that because we are going to open up one day and we're going to need that. So we're looking into having that installed across there just to stop any kind of, like a sneeze guard or anything like that. The committee meetings can resume, you'll probably have to use my Zoom account because I can link it to our YouTube page. And we can make arrangements, so if you're on a committee and you want to have a meeting, let me know, we'll, we'll make it happen. We, I, we closed the beach in the pier parking. Right now, it's been okay, there've been a couple of days when it was really busy out there. We had about as many people as we could safely handle. If it gets out of hand, we will have to close the pier. We talked about that with the police department, and we won't close it permanently, we'll just close it for the duration of the time and maybe open up the next day when, when things clear out, but it's just what we have to do. The boat ramps are, they are open to kayaks and canoes as long as that executive order is in place. The residents have been very, very good going through the city. We've seen a few maybe construction projects, they're kind of rogue and, but nothing major going on. And the visitors have given us a hard time. We now, it's confirmed, we have the best yard in the county because everybody wants to play here. They don't want to stay home and walk in their own yard, they want to come to ours. And I guess that's a good problem, it's a tough one to have now, but most people are complying. The financial side, we're going to take a hit financially. We actually are not in as bad of shape as some, as actually as many municipalities. Number one is because we put a lot of things in place already out of necessity that they're just starting to do now. Monroe, Frenchtown, they're, they're looking at, they're still looking at the assessment challenge from Addison. And now this is really a double hit for them. Revenue sharing with the state is going to be down and Act 51 money is going to be down. Those two, we know, will be down. We will see a decrease in our parking revenue. I think property tax revenue is a fairly unchanged. Right now, they're talking about programs to help municipalities, but nothing has been passed. And there's, there were a few things in place to pay for any extra costs you have because of COVID-19. And ours really have been negligible, we haven't put out a lot of money strictly to handle the COVID-19. The parking lot doesn't qualify because that's considered a revenue loss and, and there's not, there's no, no program for lost revenue. We'll probably do, look at the budget again as things play out, but there's just not enough information right now. We'll, we'll have to watch it, it's a very, still a very fluid situation. One thing I will add that we are going to postpone the Freedom Festival. If we've, we've known, we know that we are going to do that, but it's pretty much official now. I'll make the announcement here and I'll make the announcement on our Facebook page and on our Freedom Festival page, let everybody know that it's just not going to happen, it's just not realistic. I don't think anybody's going to have a festival, at least in June or July in Michigan. All of the fireworks have been canceled in Michigan and pretty much every festival. Blissfield's going to try to have one, but I, I'll believe it when I see it, it's just not going to happen. We got to get businesses going first before we start funding festivals. Now for the department reports, do we have any questions on the mayor's report? Where we go, and you can jump in anytime, just like we would at a regular meeting.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, is it, I've heard reports that our zip code 4815, whatever it is, has no reports of any virus here. Is that true?
Officially. Officially, that is true with the health department. I suspect, I, I really suspect there are cases here that have not been confirmed. I, I, there's, there's some information, but it's hearsay, I can't really repeat it at a public meeting. But you, it's just about, I just don't think we've tested positive yet, but it's probably here.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, it's now, well, just unplug myself here. There, can you hear me?
Yes.
Department reports, that committee, any impromptu report here or?
No. We don't have, we don't have anything to report. We didn't, of course, we didn't have our meeting last month, but we've made everybody aware of the situation and hopefully they've listened to us and are prepared for especially what might happen Saturday or Sunday night, so. But other than that, I think the city pretty well buttoned up. Hopefully we don't get any real, real bad weather, you know, we got the pumps, pumps all ready to go, so.
Yeah.
That's about it.
Yep, as we said earlier, there is a pump set up already in Allen Cove, and the other ones are staged and, and ready to roll out at DPW. It looks like Saturday night, maybe, it was Saturday night that it was supposed to be bad. It kind of, the report kind of moved back a little bit, so Sunday night could be the big night. About four hours, we're going to have some pretty strong northeast winds, so that will be interesting. We'll be watching the weather map very, very closely. Think everybody's seen the police report, if our report, fire calls actually are down because of not as much traffic. The billing report is basically non-existent because we're not issuing permits. There's some work going on for some emergency repairs and securing a property, but very, very little. Any other committee reports, anybody has to report on, I didn't know of any. Yeah, we do not have any old business to cover.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes.
I noticed something on the fire report that I hadn't really noticed before, it was a little footnote at the bottom. Since you're sharing your screen, I'm not seeing, not able to key mine, but do you know what that actually means specifically?
That I don't, I know there were two of them there and I didn't catch the footnote.
Let me see if I can find it here.
Where it says only reviewed incidents included?
That's the one.
Yeah.
That's the one.
I will have to look into that because I don't know.
Yeah, it was interesting that it showed up on this report, so I just thought we'd ask.
Uh, I know, I, I have a suspicion. There is one that is under review, but as far as I know.
It's okay.
There's no information.
Let's not say it here.
Yeah, I will not, yeah, no, I would not, I speculate.
Right.
On it, but I, I know where to look, but I'll, I'll get the answer to that. Any other questions? New business, we have the USDA grant draw, that is for work that is completed. David Arthur Consultants is anxious to get their money along with, along with the contractors, the work they did complete. There may be another one coming up, but it's not ready yet, so it hasn't gone through the approval process. We saw the radio, public radio communication system agreement, this is what we agreed to earlier. The difference now is it has all the details filled in of how many radios, the radio numbers, who is going to use them, how many the police department needs, how many the fire department needs. So all of those details are solidified in this and the agreement we're passing today. And the money will come out of their individual budgets for, to cover radios.
So nothing from the city?
Well, from the, from the city, but from the, from the budgeted money that's in, yeah, it's budgeted to their departments for, for that purpose. And there, there was grant, grant money along with that, the county really did their homework on that. They secured as much grant money as they could, they found the most fair way they could.
There's a lot of money.
Divide that up. It is a lot of money, yeah.
Is that a one-time price?
Uh, we will be, we, I, we'll be paying on that for a long time because it includes the service along with it. So it'll be an annual at least.
But not that much a year?
Okay, no, not, no.
No, there's just the reoccurring cost of the service and that, but I think the money that they secured was for up to 10 years so far of it. So we're okay for a while.
Yeah, we're good for a while, and we are going to start capturing. Jolene can help me out with this, some of the expenses when we go out on a call.
For cost recovery.
Okay, yep. Cost recovery, we have not done that in the past, we're going to have to now. For anytime we get called out on the expressway or even if somebody comes into the city and we get called to handle a situation, we can charge it their insurance company, and that's money that's on the table that we've never tapped into and we really, really should.
It was in Erie, they did that in Erie, and a lot of times too with being on the water, that's big money also. But it's, I mean, it would bring in thousands of dollars to the.
I vote yes.
I'm sorry, Jolene, you said that Erie's doing it, are you saying they just started doing it?
Oh, no, they, no, they've been doing it for years.
Okay.
Yeah, the big money comes from the expressway, so we really didn't have that much opportunity. But now that we are going on the expressway a lot more because of the construction mostly, but we have a lot more people coming to our, our city, two visitors. And if the kayakers who came in and tipped over and we had to send a boat out, we could do a cost recovery on that. That one's going to be tough. But I don't know if we'll pursue that one, but incidents like that, we can pursue it.
Haven't we, haven't we had that ordinance in play, we, they've just never used it?
That is correct, they put it, everything into place to do that, but it was before we were going out on the expressway. It just, we didn't have that many cases and it just kind of got dropped under the table and never picked back up again.
So how does that? I'm sorry, how does that work? So that obviously each officer's going to know when those incidents occur, is that something they need to report on? And then it comes to the city to go after that, or is it just all contained within the police department?
No, it's, go ahead, Jolene.
Um, actually, what it is, is they fill out reports and it goes to the actual cost recovery company, and then they go after the insurance companies for the money. And then the checks usually come into what it did in Erie, it came into the township. And then we reimbursed the money into their line items, their cost recovery line items for the police department and the fire department.
Okay.
That will help out with some of our expenses.
So it's only accounting on the city's part then, right?
Yes, correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep. And we should have some fees with the medical cannabis coming in when that gets up and running. They are ready to start, they cannot right now because it's not deemed essential. If they were operating, they could, it would be essential, but building it, it's not.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, same with the, I'll report on the, the new, the senior housing center that they're building, the former Harborside. They, you probably saw an excavator there in front of the school. They are going to pull, tear the school down, they did not pull a permit yet, but they just moved the equipment in for storage right now. And when everything lifts, they're hope to, to do, pull the permit and, and continue that work. So things are happening there, it's just.
Awesome.
The emergency right now is, is the holdup on both projects.
Are they, have they talked about renaming it?
I have not heard any talk about that.
Good.
Of course, and, and we are working closely with them through the building department, and I just haven't been there to answer the question, so. But they, they hope to, they, they're, they're still working, doing the engineering and everything to get that going. We have the letter from start negotiation with Dave Gouls. What this is, is this time of year, will, the committee goes to work, we authorize the committee to negotiate with them. Then the committee comes to us and does a recommendation. That's how that's going to work, and all we're doing right tonight is voting to authorize the committee to negotiate on behalf of the city. Now, the, we need to appoint one person to the relations committee. This is really kind of a young, one, once a year, every year we do this, and one, we, we had a turnover in, in, on the council, so we were short one seat, so. We, when we get there, I'm going to make a recommendation for Mike Anstett. I think he would do a fantastic job of that. And same with the chief Anzel, start negotiation, negotiations with the police department. And the committee will handle that too, and then make a recommendation to the council. The ordinance, the flood plain management, the first reading, this is what we have to do to maintain our eligibility with FEMA. We've gone through our plan, Mike Dempsey marked everything in and filled in all of the information, did all the, all the work on it. All we have to do is pass it to, to their satisfaction that we have an ordinance in place, that we follow all the building codes for a flood plain.
And. Also because there are flood maps.
What's, oh, the flood map?
Yeah, because we're getting new flood maps, so that will be all included in this.
Okay. Yes, and the flood map for Lunapier is very, very little changed, but it, it's really pretty much almost exactly the same. There's a matter of feet that changed. But because, when we vote on that, we're accepting that flood map and saying that we agree with it. And then resolution number 945 is the flood millage that we wanted to put on the ballot when the school made their announcement, and we did not want to be on the ballot at the same time they did. This is an essential, it's one mil, the current is a half a mil, we're going to up it, we're trying to up it one to one mil. If we can't pass it this time of year, we never will pass one. And the Dyke system is bad, we, we, we're putting a lot of money into it. Any questions on that? This time I'll move on to community input, if anybody wants to call 734-848-6495. They can leave comments, and we'll just kind of, we can.
Take a theatrical pause.
Yeah, that's what we'll do, if you want to pause and walk away, you can, because it's about 30 seconds here that we, time to kill for the, for the fee.
I should have texted Howard.
Yeah.
You're up.
Hey, I have a question, somebody called and asked, this lady had heard that someone in Lunapier was making masks. And she didn't, she wanted to know if it was for the general public, and if it was, if we know who this person is, if, you know, they can contact this person, so I hadn't heard anything, so if, I don't know if anybody else has.
I, I would, don't know who that is.
I, I think I heard something about Pete and Kelly across the street from me, I'll, I'll check with Kelly.
Okay, and then just let me know, because I have her number, so.
Okay, I thought I saw something on Facebook though that she was making some masks, I'll have to check.
Is she or her mom might be, but I don't know.
Well, I know Patty and my next door neighbor Gretchen, they made a bunch of them, but they've been supplying them all to the nursing homes and areas that actually didn't have any masks, so. But they have, they haven't sold them, but like I said, they probably have made 300 and distributed them throughout the community.
Well, they would definitely be the priority before, you know, anybody else, I would think.
I think there's a lady in Erie that's selling them, but I don't know where she's at.
Yeah, no, they, they donated all of theirs, and like I said, they probably have made close to 400, 450 masks. Give them to, yeah, yeah. Every night.
That's great.
Yeah, I know that there are some people selling them and there are some people giving them away.
Yeah.
And I see, we do have two people watching our YouTube channel. So that's.
It could, it could be my mom.
Hi, mom.
No, at this time, I think I'll, I'll move on to council action. If somebody does skim in with a late comment, we'll, we will accommodate, but this time we'll move on to council action. Media, USD grant draw number seven, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion on that. I propose a motion to approve the USDA grant draw number seven in the amount of $68,000 as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support, any discussion? Let's do a roll call on that, make sure your microphones are on.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Grams up?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Meadows? Meadows?
Yes.
Anstett?
Yes.
Russell? Mayor Gardner?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. The Public Safety Radio Communication System, describer agreement twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Public Radio Communication System Agreement twenty nineteen with Monroe County. The city of Luna Pier will be paying a one-time fee of two hundred and fifty dollars per radio. Police cost for seven radios will be one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the fire department cost for twenty radios will be five thousand dollars as presented.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion? Now we'll go to a roll call.
Gramsa?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Anstett?
Yes.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Russell?
Yeah.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Council action needed. Dave Gouts letter to start negotiations. Do I have a motion?
Before we do that, are do are we adding the recommendation for the who's making up the committee as well at this time or does that?
We we will. Yeah, it's the next one in line.
Thank you. I'll propose a motion to approve the starting of negotiations for the employee agreement for twenty twenty, twenty-one, or excuse me, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion. We have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Now we can fill our vacancy on that committee. The committee is authorized, but now let's make it a complete committee. I'm going to recommend that Mike Anstett be appointed to the employee relations committee. Do I have a motion?
I propose the motion that we approve Mike Anstett to the Employee Relations Committee.
Thank you. And we have support.
Excuse me, who supported?
Stacy.
Support.
Okay.
Rich did.
Yeah, we had two of them.
Jeff did too.
Yeah.
Very supportive.
Yes.
Everyone but Mike.
I'm not in support.
Any, any, any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, I'm going to, motion carried.
Who else is on the committee again, Jim?
Stacy and Dawn.
Okay, great, thank you.
You'll be working with them and you guys can get together and set up your times and and the terms.
Okay.
Chief Ansel's emailed for negotiate, start negotiations. Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve the starting of negotiations for the employee agreement for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year for Chief Ansel. Working agreement.
Or, okay, we have support.
I support.
Councilman Russell, I think, well, Councilman Russell, I think, supported that one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposed, motion carried. Ordinance number two forty-four flood plain management, first reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll propose a motion to approve ordinance number two hundred and forty-four flood plain management as presented and dispensed with the reading. Excuse me, presented first reading and dispensed with the reading.
Thank you, Councilman Wakeman.
Support.
I heard two of those, so I'll let Jolene decide which one.
Got it. I got it.
Do we, I think we can do this with a all in favor vote, can we, Jolene?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Move on to a slide that looks very, very similar to the first one. Ordinance number two forty-four flood plain management, second reading.
I propose a motion to approve the ordinance number two forty-four flood plain management as presented, the second reading, and dispensed with the reading and approve.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion. We have support. My Councilwoman Gramsa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. Our flood reserve millage. Do I have a proposal or a motion?
I proposed a motion to approve the resolution number nine four five flood reserve millage for the August four twenty twenty primary election as presented, waiving the reading.
Support. Wakeman.
Okay, we have a motion. We have support. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Gramsa?
Yes.
Anstett?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Russell?
Yeah.
Meadows?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Well, with that, I think we covered all of our council business. Very good. Everyone did fantastic. And we just made history in Luna Pier, our first ever online council.
I thought it went quite well.
I think so too. It's for everybody getting up to speed very, very quickly. Thank you all for the work you put into it and preparing and honing your technological skills. And others who who stepped in to to really help some of us who are less skilled at this.
Mayor, I'd like to just bring up some information to share with the group that they could start passing around to loved ones in the city.
Okay.
So I was, it was obviously something I saw on the news and not all the news is enjoyable lately. But this one was actually pretty good where a doctor came on and talked about another method for gauging the symptoms of poss, the possible symptoms of COVID. And it was to be able to check the oxygen level in your blood since the, since the virus attacks the lungs. Another measurement is, or another good measurement besides checking your temperature is to check the oxygen level in your blood and you can do that with what they call a pulse oximeter. And I'm sure that Dawn is much more aware of what those do, but it's a pretty non-invasive little device. Unfortunately, once that hit the news, everybody's pretty much kind of sold out on them. But still probably worth looking into for yet another method of checking your symptoms for the possibility of.
What's it called again?
It is a pulse oximeter, O X I meter. It takes your pulse and measures the amount of oxygen you in your blood without pricking it. Is that right, Dawn? There's no.
It is. Don't go anywhere. I'll I'll bring one and show it to you. Give me a second.
Oh, great.
And you can get those at like any pharmacy kind of thing?
Yeah, Amazon and, yeah. There, like I said, as of that news report this morning, though, it about about shut everybody that was selling them down because everybody jumped on it, but.
Who who makes them? It might be good stock.
Oh, boy, there's a, there's probably thirty-five different manufacturers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you, can you see it?
A whole bunch of them and varying prices and none of them are in stock almost.
Can you see it?
We're still on the last information page.
Got to hold it up to your.
Hold it in front of your face. There you go.
I.
Slipping on your finger.
I'm still on the last page. There we go.
You put it on your finger like that. And before the Corona thing, you could get these for like thirty-five dollars.
Yep.
So as you see, my pulse ox is ninety-eight.
Oh, very good.
And my pulse is high because I just ran up and down the stairs.
I'm not going to show you.
I'm going to show you right now.
Well, thank you for.
But they're really, they're good to have.
So what's a normal oxygen level?
Any, anywhere, as as a nurse, if your oxygen level was below ninety, we would make sure the doctor really knew it. They won't order oxygen until you're in the eighties.
Okay.
So, but usually in the nineties, the average healthy person runs anywhere from ninety-four to ninety-nine.
Is it, is it true that if you, if you're in the nineties and you have COVID, then you need to get to the hospital? Is that correct? I mean, if you're below the nineties, that's what someone said. That's what the the purpose is when it drops down into the eighties.
Into the eighties. That's not a good thing.
Said the nineties.
Yeah, that means you're sick.
Eighties, yeah.
No, if you're in the eighties, but probably most people with COVID are private in the low eighties, maybe seventies.
Oh, man.
That's, yeah, and it's good to know. I know of two cases where, well, one person was trying to get into the doctor and they kept telling him, no, that you you don't get the symptoms and he died in his garage.
So the good news is.
And it's a local person.
Right. The good news is you have another method for testing the possibility besides a fever. The bad news is that everybody's bought them right now and you'll have to really hunt and pack around to Google or get your Googler out.
Yeah, my mine is probably eight or nine years old, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably, it's a good thing. I know two people who were refused tests and they received tests posthumously and tested. One tested positive, one is not, no results yet, but you want to prevent that.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll back to my. As you go, this, all the meetings are down there, but there's nothing scheduled. But if you do, if you are on a committee and you want to schedule, let me know. We can set up a Zoom meeting and we can do it.
And then let me know too because it'll have to get posted.
Yes, we'll post it for the guidelines. And this is, I assume it's for limited time for as long as the emergency is in place. But I'm sure we will know soon enough when we can meet in person.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Now, they said, all we need to, go ahead, Jeff.
Stay safe, everybody.
Yeah, okay, we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Who is that?
Support.
That was Neil.
Neil and then Councilwoman Gramsa on support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, hearing none, meeting as adjourned. Thank you, everyone. You did a fantastic job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Everyone.
With that, I will stop recording.